Welcome, everybody. I am calling the Special Board of Education meeting to order. It is Monday, August 5th, 2024. It is 6:04, and we are back in the Nashville North Boardroom. We've been having some fun meetings down at the new middle school so that we can show it off. So feels drab here now, doesn't it? Not a lot of fresh sunlight.
Nice and cool, though.
It is. It's a little easier for us to talk. Okay. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call?
Sure.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Prin? She's here by phone. Do you hear us?
I'm here. I'm sorry that I'm making you an announcement.
Thanks, Kirsten.
I'm here.
Kirsten is in the airport, so she is kindly cute.
I might be there all night, too, if I wanted.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes, here.
Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Gilio?
Yeah.
I am here. And Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay. And then we have Dr. Andreid, and Mr. Gray, and Mr. Bows. Hey. We'll turn the floor over to you, Dr. Andreid, for the first.
Would you like to join me at the podium? So it is our pleasure tonight to give out a scholarship award from the New Hampshire School Board Association. So it reads, "The New Hampshire School Board Association is pleased to recognize you for your outstanding achievement and leadership during your high school year. And this is presented to Severin Johnson, May of 2024." We have a certificate and a check.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Excellent. Hand it over to your father now.
Good job.
Good, Seth? You got to take it with you?
Yeah, I'm going home.
I'm sure Dad gets a finder's fee, right? That's awesome. I love how our School Board Association that we're a part of is able to celebrate our students. That's fantastic. Okay, so this brings us up to, we're actually going to be, do you want to speak on that?
Yep. For tonight, we were fully prepared to make an administrative recommendation for the Director of Communications. Unfortunately, over the weekend, there was a medical emergency, so she had to fly back home. So I met with her this morning, and she was on a flight back home. So we're going to just table this for this evening and then revisit it, kind of coming forward. Family's always first, so we went to make sure she's taking care of her family, and then we're open to make a recommendation forthcoming.
Now I will turn the floor back over to you.
So the first.
I'm the most useless emcee tonight.
So the first recommendation is to approve the Amplify C K L A Professional Development Plan in the amount not to exceed 126,500. Funding to use 79,700 from Title II and $105,000 from the operating budget. The 105,862 is for the materials, and the 79,700 is for 10 hours of professional development. It's six hours of professional development on September 10th for all K through 5 teachers. We also worked with the Amplify and the Department of Justice to get this approved, this PD approved. So it will meet or satisfy ELL regulations. So last year, if I could say, with the rollout of C K L A, it was very little professional development for the teachers because we had to do a lot of ELL training and things like that. So this year, working with Amplify and the Department of Justice, Amplify has restructured some of their PD in order to meet ELL strategies. So it will count. And again, all elementary teachers will get 10 hours of PD in the C K L A implementation. So last year, as you recall, it was just a pilot. Only some teachers got some PD, and it was sporadic in some areas. So this is a much more comprehensive plan. The C K L A will be in every classroom, K through 12, because it's just not a pilot. So there'll be more consistency going forward. And again, there's a lot more structured professional development this year as opposed to last year. So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it, but I have some questions.
Thank you. So for the record, that was Ms. Lampier and Ms. Raymond. Go ahead with your questions, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. So I apologize if there was a curriculum, an instruction meeting this month because I missed it, if there was. So do we have any, because the last one was in April. So do we have any data or evidence or feedback about how the pilot went? Like, do we know, has it had an appreciable impact on our students', you know, progress towards reading? I mean, I'm certainly, I think, refocusing on phonics is important, and I think we certainly could see some of the kids being engaged in the C K L A curriculum in a way that I didn't expect. But I'm still looking for, before we roll it out to everybody, like, what was the impact?
So we have it segregated between pilot classrooms and non-pilot classrooms, but we do see an overall increase in student achievement. I think you hit some of the salient points. Where students were exposed to a richer kind of curriculum, but also I think the secondhand changes, just the change in attitudes on having higher expectations. The feedback I did get from many teachers, administrators, was around the rollout and the manner in which the pilot happened. So, you know, pros and cons of the resource, but really the bigger impact was, is there enough professional development? So again, with the pilot and focusing on ELL last year, there wasn't a ton of PD. So I think that's the biggest feedback I'm getting. So again, it's, the qualitative data is, students are getting exposed to a richer curriculum, higher classroom expectations, and we are seeing students a lot more engaged. Breaking that down into the SAS data is a little more complicated because even still, it's only year one. Limited PD to say this was the sole impact. As you know, we have incredible teachers, and I think they're going to do a great job, no matter what the resources. So I don't want to create, if we saw a 5% or 10% gain in the classroom, it was solely because of this resource. So I think it's still too early for that. But again, I think the biggest concern that I received was around the rollout and the supporting professional development.
Daniels-Williams?
Rolled out as a pilot, is this something that we have to continue going forward? Because I haven't heard that. I don't have as much experience as you and as much insight to the numbers or to the teachers as you. I just, I'm not sure. How are we sure that this is the best choice, is my question, just for the public?
It is a very high-regarded resource through what works, Staring House and its research base. It is held in high regard. So is it the best resource? I think it always comes down with a comprehensive plan, whether it's C K L A, Wisdom, another purchase curriculum. I think at the end of the day, it's the execution and the support of teachers. When we're trying to build standards, what we want to make sure is our systems is that the teachers have a rich understanding of the standards, supported by whatever resources available. So it shouldn't be the resource and then the standards. It should be the standards and then the resource. So I think this is a curriculum that unifies all the schools, all the classrooms, kind of moving forward to have the same kind of conversation. Do we have to buy this? No. However, I would caution that on what, if we do not purchase C K L A, what's the other resource that we're going to give teachers? And so do we want each school purchasing their own resources? I don't think that's the idea. You know, there's other purchased kind of curriculum out there that will be very similar. I think we would have to come forward to say, what's the comprehensive PD plan supporting the rollout? So it's not an absolute thing, we have to buy this, but I would recommend that we move forward in this direction.
I was just wondering. A pilot and only select students got it, so what were the other students getting while these students were in the pilot?
Yeah, and again, I think if, you know, in the years past, if you were listening to like the CIA meetings or just over the years, it was, Nashville was, I don't want to say hodgepodge, but it wasn't unified, K through 12. So you, different classrooms were doing different things, or the resources weren't as quite unified as using one program. Again, at the end of the day, I think when we're moving forward, is that we have to rely on teachers are our greatest resource and experts. And so it's not, and we always want to look at fidelity to the program, but it's really the teachers making that, like, adjustments in time as opposed to just flipping a page. So we're hoping as we're moving forward, it's around communities of practice, PLCs, and making those adjustments. Again, last year, the rollout was very, this is what we're doing, this is what you have to do. Working with the elementary principals, we know that it needs to be adjusted, especially in Yatso.
Gilia?
I just wanted to say that despite the rollout problem, and, you know, so that it took a while for people to really get excited about this. But our Curriculum and Evaluation Committee had a really nice presentation, I think it might have been in April, where a lot of the teachers who were using the program and got used to it and realized at the beginning, it was a lot of hard work. But with the more support they're going to get this year, I think that's going to make it easier. And so they were very, very enthusiastic about the C K L A program.
Any new change and any new resources, difficult. It takes a little while to get there. But again, we really need to rely on our teachers as experts. And then we're teaching to the standards and not the resource at the end of the day.
And I was gonna, I was seeing if she can hear us. Ms. Prin, can you hear us?
I can hear. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question is, is are we going to pilot any other programs? Because this really isn't a pilot if we're only doing one program. We really, if we're going to do justice, we need to find another program. We also need to pilot and compare the two because I'm not sure C K L A is the answer. I really don't.
At this time, we were not planning on piloting a different program. And I don't, I don't.
Why not? Why not? Because then that's not a pilot then. Then it's an implementation. If we're not testing another program, it's not a pilot.
So to that, the only aspect I can talk to that, Ms. Prin, is if we wanted a smaller pilot with a smaller group of teachers, we would have to, you know, reconvene a steering committee that wasn't enabled to kind of go forward. So again, I want to be careful as a district that, I don't want to be changing resources every year, but I think it's also, the focus needs to be on the standards and not the resource. So I don't think we need to be always solely committed to one resource. And I agree, C K L A might not be the answer. It might be a combination. But I think we, I'm not opposed, but I would rather reconvene a steering committee to look at different resources and how do we move forward as a district. But as of tonight, we were not planning on a different pilot, but I'm not opposed to it.
I have a question. How many years of implementation do we need to have to show a significant increase in reading scores over time?
So usually, again, you're looking for two to three years of implementation before it's, because you want to build the background knowledge, a greater understanding of the standards, and making sure there's a direct correlation of, it's the resource. And oftentimes, what we notice is spike in scores is through the professional development. It's not so much on the materials in the resource, it's a deeper understanding of the standards. And then it's the execution and the art and teaching of, the art and science of teaching, using that resource that we see the results. So, but every five years, we should be looking, if we're looking at a curriculum cycle, every five years, we're actually looking at, is the resource working? So it's, but again, Ms. Prin is correct where it wasn't a true pilot, there wasn't a different resource. But I would rely on a steering committee to look at a different resource if we want a smaller pilot, but.
And I'll go the other way where, because it wasn't really a pilot, it was, it was elementary school-wide. Because of that, we actually have clear data going from 2022 to 2023, and then 23 to 24, where instead of having one classroom in one classroom, I would, I would beg to, I would assume that we would actually have stronger data because it was a whole district-wide shift and not just dependent on, like, you know, was that one teacher just more equipped to present this information, whereas this other teacher, you know, liked what they were doing before? That takes out the variables and seeing.
And so we have, like, say at Charlotte, there was very few classrooms using C K L A, so we have their data. But again, I don't want to make quick decisions saying one is better than the other because there wasn't a vast amount of professional development. Like, there wasn't 10 hours of PD to say it was successful and not successful, or that rollout, or before the April meeting, right? Like, it was tough the first six months in the transition with the supports. So if it wasn't successful, was it a result of the program or was it the result of the lack of professional development? So I think it's still early to assess whether it's working or not.
Ms. Raymond, then Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Well, given our lack of data, I can't support going all in on a new program without having that information, right? Like, to me, it just doesn't seem appropriate to say, we're going to try it in some classrooms, but not others. We're not going to give people the resources that they need to really get comfortable with it. And then we're going to go all in with the whole district the very next year without presenting to the board or the community any data at all to describe what happened the first year. I can't, I can't support it right now. I just can't. And maybe C K L A is the answer. I don't, I'm not equipped to have that knowledge because I don't have anything to base the decision on.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Can I ask that we table it till we hear from the committee that Dr. Andreid was talking about? The steering committee?
The steering committee is not in place right now.
That's what I'm saying. If I could table it until we create that and then carry it forward.
So that would, that could be six months.
Okay.
So that also means there's not materials going forward for the next six months in teachers' hands.
I have a question. What happened to the material that the teachers that were not in the pilot using, or that they can't use for the 2024, 2025 school year? 25, 26, I'm sorry.
So there is limited resources. A lot of those either weren't reordered, or they're, again, it's not as structured as it was if we were using a program. So.
Could we go back to it? Because, you know, like I said, right now, I don't think that, I don't feel comfortable, as one of nine, saying that this is a positive change to now go school-wide, you know, K through 12, when it wasn't as successful as we had hoped in the two years that we tried to pilot, oh, I'm sorry, in the years that we tried to pilot it, and then everyone still didn't get it. And we would spend more money. So being conservative of our finances, I think that that's definitely a no for me.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I don't know if it's reasonable to expect data after the first year of a program. And I think if I were a teacher working with this program, working with these materials, I might not like it, but I certainly wouldn't feel comfortable making a judgment about the effectiveness. And now we're talking about giving people who are, who are in it proper training, and I just think it would be foolish to pull the rug now. And the other thing, I don't recall that a pilot requires competitive, alternative pilots to be considered a pilot. I was part of a pilot program that weren't alternatives. A pilot just means you try it. And I just read an educational journal that talks about how to make an effective pilot. It doesn't say you need more than one. So I think I would have, I would have a strong problem pulling the rug out from these teachers. And I think we're almost, if this was year two, and you said, where's the data? We want to know if this is effective. But, you know, you're a teacher, that first year, year three might be the time to say, fisher cut bait, not now.
I think I don't understand the question before us because my understanding of the question was, we are going to expand it. I didn't, it was not my understanding of the motion or the presentation on the agenda that it was, we either throw it away or we go full, like, I would expect that by not expanding it, that the people who were keeping it, that they could keep it. Like, is there no middle ground where people could be properly trained who are testing it? Is it all or nothing? Because giving teachers nothing three weeks before school starts is not acceptable.
Well, that's, that's my concern if we.
If Mr. Claffey is right, then we can't do that.
So that would be my concern if we do not vote to go forward. Again, I had conversations with elementary principals. They're aware that we're going district-wide this year, even the schools that weren't piloting. It brings a little cohesion to the school, but it is the expansion. I would be concerned, I would have to go back, again, to your point, if we just kept it in the classrooms this year that piloted last year. I would be concerned about building a system at the elementary level, two years in a row, where we have some classes using C K L A, some classes not using C K L A. Again, I think in general, C K L A is a quality program. The rollout last year was, was difficult, and I think more with 10 hours of professional development, I think we'll see a different kind of conversation. Will we still get some negative remarks? I think any kind of program that comes in will get negative remarks. But again, I don't, after one year, I'm really hesitant to say it was 100% successful or not successful. But I would like to move forward across all these schools with a unified plan or comprehensive plan to support our ELLA instruction at that level.
How much more professional development is in this than was last year? And supports?
So it would be, the, at the elementary last year, the 10 hours of contractual professional development was ELLA-focused through WESAP. So the pilot teachers maybe got three or four hours of professional development, whether it was through webinars or some orientation to the contract. So this is definitely much more in-depth than they've received in the past. We still have, I think you have a copy of the contract, they'll still have, building principals will have coaching meetings, and then webinars will still be available. So it's about double or a little more hours of PD than last year.
Daniels-Williams?
So how many teachers are teaching C K L S now? And how many are total teachers do we have?
I don't have the exact numbers of the C K L A teachers in front of me.
So how many elementary school teachers are there?
About 300 teachers.
And less than 100 of them were teaching C K L S?
I would have to go back to the report. I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay. So that's, I'm just trying to get to the point of, like, we're talking about, less than half of the elementary school teachers are teaching this curriculum last year. And now we want to move to the all levels. So that's what, that's what we're saying. Maybe possibly the teachers that are already teaching it, they can get more teaching, and it can be a true pilot, instead of broadening it all across the district. Is that an option? Can we separate it in that way?
I would be concerned to do that two years in a row.
Gilia?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Raymond said, which is, school starts three weeks from tomorrow. And if I understand what Dr. Andreid said earlier tonight, there's already a lot of PD planned for September 10th, which is a day, a total PD day. The students do not have school. It's an election day. And, and so this is already set to go. It's a little late to replace it with something else.
And it's DOJ-supported. It meets the PD that we need to meet for the ELL. I mean, if anyone wants my opinion.
We don't even get a choice because it's already so close. It's like the last decision this board made.
So, I mean, I apologize that, you know, we're having a special meeting tonight. The last couple of months in China, there was a lot of conversations happening over the last couple of months that we're getting caught up to speed.
Mr. Johnson, and then I have a question, too.
Yeah, just, this is a question. On the description of the implementation stuff, it does have August 1st for the school improvement system. So I'm assuming we'd have a new date for that.
You're looking at the WESAPs or the?
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the WESAPs. Sorry about that.
Comparatively price-wise, is this similar to other curriculums?
Yes.
So even if we shifted gears and went to a different resource, we're still looking at spending about the same money? But then we would have to spend all of the extra time getting the DOJ on board and training the teachers?
Yes. And again, I think it's, one of the things, we were having a conversation, quite honestly, this morning in the curriculum office, where we should be seeing this amount of money on a yearly basis. Because a lot of this is consumables and then whatever the other PDs. So whether it's Eureka Math, Amplify Science, C K L A, a different ELLA resource, no matter what the name is, these are programs that are in every elementary classroom that we have to get used to. I don't want to say rolling over, but it's going to be a fixed cost in the curriculum budget. And then really, as we go forward, is how do we evaluate the resource? Whether it's a math program, a social studies program, and that should be happening on a five-year kind of continuum.
We just made that policy, didn't we? About evaluating curriculum resources? Did that go through or was that a? We sent it back to policy because it said on an ongoing basis or, you know, from time to time. And I think we wanted to firm that language up to have something a little bit stronger so that we are having these meetings and they're not, we're not missing the data.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm just putting it on my soapbox here. I mean, one of the things that local school boards do in New Hampshire and other places across the country is approve the curriculum so that, you know, instead of the state level. And so we actually have to have an understanding of what we're looking at in order to make those decisions.
So again, I just want to reiterate where, where we need to be moving is still focusing on the common core state standards. And those have been in place since 2010, right? So resources may come and go, and there might be a better resource, and we're not teaching to the resource. We're teaching to the standards and using an appropriate resource. So C K L A, again, is highly vetted, it's a. again, is highly vetted. It's a, it's a great program. You know, other districts are using them. So again, it's how are you supporting the teachers and the implementation? I think we have a solid professional development plan. I hear your concerns with it. Again, I, you know, I, I feel bad that it's August shift and we're having this conversation. But I want to make sure we're not postponing this so that teachers have resources in their hands for the first day of school.
Mr. Claffey?
Can I make reference to a change in central office without names?
Well, that's been the last couple of months.
So I, you know, I think we're, the elephant in the room is the vacancy that we have now. And I think if that position were still filled by the same person, we would have had this conversation a while ago. And I think there's, if you go back to meetings, she, she championed this program. And I think whoever replaces her might benefit from having a program in place. They might not necessarily support it, but at least they're not coming in with, and I'll tell you, the attitude that a lot of teachers have is, these initiatives from central office, they come and they go. And there's, there's really not faith or trust. And I just think for a variety of reasons, give this program at least a second year.
Yeah, I think we can, we can have some expectations about, especially with you being chair of CNE, about, you know, what is the data being pulled? What are the shifts that we're seeing? I think what we heard a lot as board members was just a lot of feedback from teachers. And of course, I think we only hear the negative feedback because that's normally the time that people want to share their thoughts. So what we heard a lot was just a lot of dissatisfaction with, you know, they didn't feel supported, they didn't feel trained, they didn't feel, they felt like this was thrown on them really quickly. And then when they stopped to ask for help, it wasn't, it wasn't totally there. So I think when we're all questioning this program, it's not necessarily the program itself, but we want to make sure that the teachers don't feel like that again. And it's, it's more about the feedback that we got and how can we, how do we best support our district? I don't think our district teachers, I don't think it's shifting mid race to a different curriculum. But I think it is with the additional PD and with the expectation that, that all teachers are doing it, not just, you know, a certain pocket of teachers. But then there's not that kind of back and forth, well, my class is doing better than your class. It's, we don't always need to have competition.
We've had a lot of conversations, I met with the elementary principals over the last couple of months. And really about, you know, last year, there was a lot top down from central office, from my office, that we're talking about the flexibility. And really, how do we work in communities of practice and PLCs and what flexibility the teachers need? So again, this is a resource that we want to keep things in my conversation with them as much as the same without major, as Mr. Claffey said, major shifts from year to year. And people are like, here we go again. So we are looking for some consistency, but also year two data in using a high quality resource. Again, that has been a lot out of whether it was SA money or title, like Title II funds or just in general, like, we need to make sure there's high quality resources in the hands of our teachers. So again, my concern is if we do a hodgepodge kind of approach where some teachers are using this and some teachers are using kind of own grown, we don't have that assurance of high quality resources. And I, I have trust in our teachers, but I think we want a solid resource.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Prin, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that I don't rant too long. I just really feel like this rollout has not been done properly. Honestly, we should have stayed with the program we were already using. We should have piloted more than one program. We should not have made it so that all the teachers are using it. The feedback that I've gotten from teachers is that they were not given a choice to still be able to use the old program. We had resources. They were told to put them away or throw them away. I apologize for that. But in order to know that we're picking the best quality program for Nashua, we really should be looking at other programs besides just CKLA. This whole, I mean, call it spade a spade. This isn't a pilot. This is an implementation. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't have been done this way to start with. It really shouldn't have. I really, really feel that if we were to pick the best program for Nashua, we should be looking at at least one more program and having other teachers pilot it instead of just picking one. So that's, that's what I have to say about the whole thing. I really, this, this whole rollout has just not done, gone well at all.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, with all that, I think important thing with this is for us as a board to hear from teachers at the end of this year and see what they think of the program. Is it helping them? Is it not helping them? Do they feel there's other things that could help them more? We really need to see that when the school year is done. So we can then, you know, determine going ahead, you know, after we've had a year of the program with all the teachers in it, if it's working or if it's not.
Yeah. I think the metrics that I would be interested in knowing is, do reading scores increase? Does class satisfaction for students and teachers increase? You know, I would imagine, and I was never a teacher, subbed every once in a while, but that's not teaching. Sorry, Mr. Claffey.
You would have been a great one.
But I would imagine if you're teaching a curriculum that doesn't resonate with students, you're probably having more behavior issues in the classroom. So if it's engaged, if it's an engaged resource and, you know, the kids are enjoying using it, I'm assuming that one of the metrics that we would see decrease is, is negative student behavior or challenging student behavior. So I think, I think if we adopt CKLA, I think we're being very clear on what we want to see at the end of next year in regards to shifts in classroom. And then, you know, if those shifts aren't happening, then that's your job. No.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lampier. Do you mind if Ms. Lampier goes? She hasn't spoken yet.
I just, this is the second meeting in a row where we've had a situation where we're faced with a decision that really if we don't make the decision that the administration recommends, then we're leaving a lot of people in the lurch. And so I think it's, I, I think we need to try and figure out when during the school year we want certain things presented to us. And early enough so that we can actually make an informed decision and not, not feel, not feel like pressured because there's no other option.
So if I may?
I mean, I know, I know, Dr. Andre, that this, in this particular case, it's not really your fault.
So, but if I may, when we presented the curriculum budget back in March, the CKLA for the, for elementary was presented, presented. So it wasn't in this fashion. So it wasn't the first time it was presented.
To be fair though, I mean, there was no discussion during the budget that if you approve the budget with this, you're also approving rolling this out to the district. And I think that connecting the dots between the thousand-page budget and what that means for policy within the district is really important and has been lacking the last two years. It was, I feel like there was a presentation.
There was a presentation.
There was a big presentation. But I don't think it was labeled as CKLA. I think it was more... No, I know.
I said it at the time. I feel like the budget presentations have been insufficient the last two years. I feel like we have nine of us in the entire community who don't understand the school budget. And that's how we ended up at the Board of Aldermen with the Board of Aldermen who don't understand the school budget. And all, I just, I'm really, I have feelings and I'm going to keep them to myself beyond this. But I, I think that to say that Ms. Lampier was off base by saying that we are again getting something without getting the whole picture or having those dots connected. Or I just feel like we need to do a better job of anticipating that dots need to be connected.
Daniels Williams?
I totally agree with what Heather was saying. It's so many dots to be put together. But we approved the professional development a couple of months ago. And before that, we did the MOU for the teachers to fix those numbers. We have been playing so much cleanup just around professional development and the September 10th day. I can't believe that we wouldn't know that this is why we were doing that. Us as a board didn't know. It wasn't presented here. It was just expected for us to put together the pieces. And I don't think that that's fair because that's not fair to the teachers that we're trying to keep here in Nashua. It's not fair to the students either.
Yes. I think we are all taking away some, some points for next year. I think, and I'll, I'll take responsibility with the budget stuff because I've actually liked how Dr. Andre's been presenting it. It hasn't been so nitty gritty like it has in the past. I kind of, I've been liking how he's doing it, but the feedback that I'm getting is that's not a favorable way for you guys. So that's definitely something that we can, we can shift. And I'll, I'll take that note on myself. I like that we were kind of focusing on the strengths and the growths and not just, I just found the old presentations boring. Anyway, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that because I've, I've been enjoying them. But let's, I think, without anything, does anybody have anything else to add? I think we've said all of our feelings and opinions, questions.
I wanted to see if we can table it till the steering committee can be formed.
We, if we don't have another curriculum to put into place, this is what we have.
But there's only so many teachers that were using it last year. There's still a curriculum that they were just using at the close of school. So I can't see that in less than 60 to 90 days, that part of the curriculum is gone. Has it been thrown away? Has it, you know what I'm saying? Is it now outdated? Is, like, what happened to what they were learning on June 10th, 11th, and 12th till today on August? Like, that should still be there in house. So we shouldn't have to decide that this has to happen today. And if we want, we learned about the numbers from the whole presentation. I do remember we had the presentation and those numbers didn't look good. You just said that they would get better next year. It was like 5% and the behavior wasn't good. Like, we, we did, we had a whole slideshow presentation that we were not allowed to vote on. It was just for our information only. But I did pay attention. I did see it. And the numbers weren't great.
Are any of our other curriculums that we have available to us vetted by the DOJ?
Not at the elementary, I mean, not for ELA. I mean, so if we took that recommendation, I would have the inventory of what all the classroom teachers have. Again, that wasn't ordered. So again, that's, we don't have that inventory of, again, what resources...
And teachers aren't, they're not able to give us that list until, what?
The first day.
August 27th, August 26th?
Gilio?
I would like to move to call the question and go to vote on this.
Oh, I had a question. What happened to all the Thomas and Penal materials?
So that's where I would, again, I would have the inventory at this point. I don't have those numbers right now. I would have to contact the elementary principals and see what the inventory is.
Yeah, because that, that's my criticism of this whole thing is, Thomas and Penal should not have been shelved or put away or thrown away or whatnot. Should have been available as a resource this whole time while more than one program was being piloted. Sorry, I know I'm repeating myself, but this, this whole thing is just really leaving a bad taste in my mouth. All right, I'll be quiet now.
So the procedure for call the question is, I'll second it just for the sake of doing that so we can move forward. The procedure for call the question is, it's a motion, you vote on it. Yes means we stop debate and we vote on the underlying issue. No means we continue debate. Has to pass with two thirds.
We've gotten really away from Robert's rules, but.
We have. Normally I look around and everyone starts nodding. And I'm like, I don't see anybody dying to still talk. We've been good with, with me not stopping talking.
That has to be a roll call vote, right?
Yes.
So.
Everything does because Ms. Prin's on the phone.
Okay, so let me, let me begin. On the question, well, calling the question, stopping debate and having the vote on the question of Amplify CKLA, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
It's two thirds, yes.
Okay. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So on the, the motion on the floor, which is to approve the recommendation for Amplify CKLA professional development with all of that extra stuff in there. That was, Ms. Lampier made the motion, Ms. Raymond seconded it. We still have to do roll call vote again.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's eight zero. Motion passes.
Thank you. I, I want to highlight the reason that we were all so passionate about this conversation is we really wanted to make sure that the teachers felt heard and, and supported. And I know they spent a lot of time connecting with us individually or over email just about their concerns for it. So I think the reason that was such an in-depth conversation is just because we did listen and we do care and we want to make sure that, that we're doing due diligence in what we're spending money on and providing. So thank you for letting us have that conversation and answering all of our questions.
And, and truly, I appreciate the conversation and, and the questions and the need for the pilot. I, I totally understand. And again, the timing of it. So again, I think this is what a healthy board does.
Yeah.
Right? Is, and have a conversation and push back on the superintendent and, in that aspect of it, which I totally appreciate. And you should be doing that. And I think we wouldn't be doing our jobs if things were either rubber stamped or that aspect. So I appreciate the feedback and I, and I do apologize, Ms. Lampier, if I didn't connect the dots in, in that aspect of it. So I think this is a healthy discourse and it just makes our conversations and be able to move forward. At the end of the day, I think I kind of alluded to some of my biases here. It's, you know, the teachers are our experts. And a resource, like, and we've, to Mr. Claffey's point, resources come and go. The standards have been pretty consistent. So how do we have, how do we strengthen our understanding of the resources, of the, of the standards so that we know that we're using the right resources? And teachers can be, you know, have the art and, and science of teaching. And that's where we see the magic kind of happen as opposed to it's one resource or another. But we do have to have high quality resources in the hands of our teachers and then give them the PD so that they can use the resource on how they were meant to be used.
Okay. Well, floor is back to you.
The second thing tonight is a recommendation to approve the agreement with the Wisconsin Center for Education Products and Services, WSEPs, for year two of the ELL professional development and coaching and the amount not to exceed 289,000 divided between some operating costs in Title II.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Comments, questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. So it says that it's divided between the, between the operating budget and the Title II funds. And I just was wondering if it was divided evenly or if you have the figures at all?
No. So right now, there's, mostly it's going to be out of Title II. That's why it says not to exceed. We're still negotiating, like, we need to get forward. As Mr. Johnson said, there's some August dates that we need to move forward. We are still negotiating on the number of coaches that were needed for February 17th. But it's mostly coming out of Title II. So we have that activity written. We just need to get it approved. We want to limit the amount of, if anything... We want to limit the amount of, if anything, out of the operating, so there's no supplanting going on.
So when, when it's decided exactly how it's going to be split, will that be brought to the finance committee? Okay, all right, thank you.
Johnson?
Just one question, on the data debrief, which is an in-person thing, will there be any availability of that presentation for people, for teachers who are not, or for coaches who are not at that, at that meeting?
So that's a data debris for the administrative staff to go over their goals. We'll expand that to coordinators and again, but it's mostly for our administrative staff to support the implementation.
Got it.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Claffey?
I always get worried about these quotes. So if I'm reading this correctly, it says this quote, which was issued on March fourteenth, is good for thirty days. I mean, sorry, what does it say this quote is good for? I just read that three months, no, where is that? I was worrying that they're going to say, well, the deadline passed, it's going to cost you fifteen percent more.
So I think I actually gave Ms. Cancel the wrong quote. So we have a new quotas as of July for, yeah, July first. So we've been working with them the last thirty days.
So the, the numbers are the same.
So we are expecting the numbers to be, again, that we don't need all the coaches on the February seventeenth date. So we're expecting it to be actually a lot lower when it's all said and done.
Okay.
Ms. Prin, do you have any, I can't see your hand. Okay, no question, I'm assuming nothing. Okay, so Ms. Prin, are you still on the phone?
I'm still here, it takes a second for me to unmute myself.
Oh, it's okay, I just, we would need to do a, a roll call if you had hung up. Ms. Raymond?
In the past, we've had members on the phone significantly. And typically they would like press a button or something to make a noise, you know, so we could know that they wanted to talk. Or just shout out, Mr. Moser was really good about just shouting out when he wanted to speak.
That Mr. Claffey used to do. Hey, Madam President? It was fun.
It was two months, I mean, I'm gonna do that once.
I know, it's fine.
In two months.
Fine, I didn't establish the rules. Okay, so seeing no other comments or questions, can you do the roll call, Ms. Lampier?
Sure. Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Ms. Raymond? Okay.
Okay, motion passes. Back to you.
All right, so the next, I'm looking for a recommendation, recommendation to approve the agreement with Link Learning, Huawei for AI technology to aid in the secondary classroom differentiation in, in the amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand five hundred using Title II funds. And I can give a little background on this as well. So Link Learning and Huawei, it's, Link Learning is the parent company, Huawei is the product. So when we talked to the middle school transformation, it was, we heard a lot about the need to support differentiation. So this is a, a tool to support teachers and differentiation. It's a, it's a pretty robust AI tool, where we didn't want to give teachers the standard, this is differentiation one oh one, that many teachers went through for years and years, where teachers can use this tools for asynchronous professional development. But you're able to put in, I want to teach seventh, I have a seventh grade social studies class in front of me. I can put the state standards in there, I can put students' achievement levels, their, their lexile levels. I can give a profile of my class. And this AI tool will start building differentiated lessons for you. It also links some videos, so if a teacher wants to see what does that mean and how does it? So it gives a lot of teacher control. Where we're looking for this contract is around data privacy agreements instead of using a chat GPT. This is a controlled platform. They're signing, they will be signing our DPA, the data privacy agreement. So we want to make sure, even though teachers are putting in generic kind of lesson plans and not putting any student names, but it is controlled. Also using this platform, if I come up with, I'm in Pennochuck and I'm a seventh grade social studies teacher, I can also invite, if Jen is over at McCauley Middle School as a seventh grade teacher, we can actually share lesson plans. And so it's a, it keeps it in-house, but it is asynchronous professional development. It is for actually not only middle school teachers, but also secondary teachers. So all of our secondary teachers will have access to this tool. And again, it's very robust and it allows teachers to put in the questions that they want. And it'll use an AI to create differentiated lesson plans or assessments for them. Instead of going to, you know, again, chat GPT or it's just paid teachers, this is a, a nice resource based on the feedback we were getting with so many changes at the middle school that this will allow teachers to get professional development when they need it, on their lessons that they're developing. So I just be that just in time learning. The research in this tool is based out of Stanford University. So they're working with Professor Pierre again on child development and also the areas of change and really putting the hands, the, the control back at the hands of teachers and not, again, waiting for three professional development days. But if a teacher's stuck on a Tuesday night doing a lesson plan, they can use the tool. They can get some ideas from there or watch some videos that are related. So that's my recommendation tonight to partner with Link Learning for sixty-two five to support our classroom teachers and differentiation.
I'll make that motion if anyone wants to second it.
I'll second it.
You have some questions. I'm understanding if you're inputting data, how much time is that going to take? Or is it going to be a self-populated database? Because this is stuff we already have in our computer system.
So the data that you, it might be a copy and paste from there, but it might be what grade are you teaching? What's the standard, what's the outcome you're looking for? So it's very interactive with, with their class. So you could put in, this is all like a, a chart of here's all the kids' male lexile levels and then differentiate according to that. So, but it, it's very minimum and it's more interactive. I've been playing around with it.
It sounds really cool.
Show me more, show me something else, what happens if I, like it's this percentage. So it's really based on the teacher's input.
Yeah, link technology is really neat. I just want to make sure it's not going to add a bunch of extra tasks to a teacher's already busy.
No, and this is, and this is again, where we're hoping, again, we're listening to the teachers or, again, any kind of professional development. Like you need to wait till February before you get this. Well, I have the keys in front of me tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm doing my lesson plans tonight, I need an idea. And again, we know teachers are going, not Ashwa teachers, but teachers are going to teachers paid teachers or they're using different resources, but we rather have more confidence. It's a secure site and we are able to share lesson plans or ideas within our own domain.
And from an HR perspective, if we have, does it create any kind of holes in which if we need to hold a teacher accountable for something, they can say it was an issue with, with the AI? How, how do you?
I'm not sure, your question.
So let's say, I don't know, I'm thinking worst case scenario, right? Like just some teacher's getting absolutely horrible information from this AI and it's being reflected in whatever evaluations they're getting. At one point, at what point can they turn around and be like, we've been using this product and it's been giving me junk responses and that's why my efficacy has gone down? Like how are you gonna, how do you hold people professionally accountable with a data system that we can't hold accountable? Besides just turning it off?
So I'm, I'm hoping that anything we don't take at face value, right? So even all the research coming out of AI right now is, we still, whether it's the classroom teacher administrator or student, that we need to verify what's coming out. We know AI has hallucinations, right? And so, so we need to be making sure. But again, this is why we're looking for a secure site. It's not a free chat GPT or Claude or something like that.
And we don't need them making up historical.
Correct, so this is where, you know, we can have a conversation with them or, again, but where it's always important is like, how is the AI learning? What's the data input? So it's much more contained, research-based as opposed to it's looking for outside kind of resources. So it is, again, coming from education background and that's where they're pulling a lot of their data. Not free resources.
Yeah, I, I'm slowly coming to the AI stuff. To me, it just seems like Terminator. That guy is going to be running behind us really soon.
So, I mean, there's a lot of.
I always want to call him TI eighty-three, but I know that's the.
So we always have to justify, right? And again, where, in an ideal world, where I would love to see this tool happening is in a professional, like, learning community or a community of practice. So it's a group of teachers going around saying, here's our next unit coming up. Let's put in our end of unit outcomes or assessment and how do we plan backwards? And they say, hey, let's generate something they're evaluating and say, this makes sense to us. So at the end of the day, it's human intelligence trumps artificial intelligence. There needs to be a, sorry. So it's like, it, it is HI over AI. And so it's always, it's, our teachers are the experts, so they need to be evaluating and kind of going forward. But everything that's coming out really is how is HI plus AI better than HI or AI below? So, so I see that happening. Or if a teacher is not performing at the standard that we expect, that the, the villain administrators have a, a conversation.
It's, you know, rocks turning them over. Ms. Lampier?
I was, did you get any other responses to this? Any other, any other proposals from any other companies?
So we vetted a couple of different resources and really going through our resources was, I think, our best option that wasn't free.
How did this, how did this company compare to the other ones?
Very high, based on, again, their data. Some companies are still not willing to sign data privacy agreements or their AI is not where it needs to be. So still a lot of hallucinations. So the, this company also works with Digital Promise in their learning, learning variability research center. So, and Digital Promise is an institute that's highly regarded as well. So they came with high recommendations.
Is, is anybody else on the state going with this company this year?
Not to my knowledge.
Ms. Raymond? Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I guess my thing is, I know that a lot of different people are using AI and it is a wave for the future. But our children aren't allowed to use AI. So now they'll be taught a lesson plan by teachers using an AI. And this will go on top of the CKLA program that we just bought for the K through five program. So I just wanted to make sure that is that accurate?
No.
Our kids are allowed to use AI?
We're moving forward in that direction, yes.
So, okay. Have a policy. And the policy sets specific guidelines for when and how AI can be used in the classroom by students. And it has to be teacher-directed, not student. But not for papers or lessons or.
So this is.
It depends on what the teacher decides.
So this is a, a logic conversation. So to Ms. Raymond's point is, so this is a, AI is a tool. And as I just said, it's a HI plus AI kind of combination. So the conversation, we had about fifty teachers last year doing some pilots on and doing action research around AI. So the question is, what's our assessment system? What are we asking kids to do? And it really gets down to what's the critical thinking skills? So AI is just a tool and how do we use it properly? This, what we're looking with Link Learning for year one, it's six through twelve, it's grade six through twelve. So it's not at the elementary level right now. Again, that's where we might expand. But year one, it's supporting the secondary schools because it came out of the middle school teachers saying, we, we're going to need some help if we're getting rid of levels. And we had the same conversation last year at the high school. If we're collapsing levels, I'm going to need help with differentiation. So this is just in time professional development at the secondary level. And if it's successful, we'll expand that kind of resource if necessary. But AI is, is again, I think, a logic conversation. It's about critical thinking skills. How can kids rethink what's the rough draft, what's the prompts that they're putting in? It's a whole different level of, again, and it's educators assessing if AI is giving back relevant information. We shouldn't just take it for face value.
World we're walking into. Robots and drones and. Ms. Raymond?
So I'm just curious about, is, is this something that the teachers or the teachers' union have said that would be helpful to them? Right, because I want to make sure that, because they're saying we need more support. I want to make sure that we're giving them support that they are going to actually find helpful and that we're not putting a Band-Aid on their, their ask as opposed to giving them like the crutch that they need. Or crutch is a bad word, but like the, you know, giving them the appropriate support that they need to be able to do what we're asking them to do and not just putting what we think might work without consulting them.
So we've been having conversations with Link Learning for like the last six months. So this was, so when we were having the conversations with the middle school steering committee, we talked about would this be a valuable source? It wasn't Link Learning itself, the name at the time, but was it just in time professional development or differentiation that would help with lesson plans? And it was positive. So again, we weren't going by company, but just really the thought on just in time asynchronous professional development that they could use in their classrooms tomorrow.
All right, Ms. Prin, Mr. Johnson?
I'm still here, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I'm just, so yeah, I'm very divided in AI because as a designer, I don't like AI. As, as a parent who had a child who had learning disorder and I do like AI. I think a lot of it can benefit students if implemented correctly. And again, this is something where I think it could benefit the teachers. But again, this is something where we're going to need to hear teacher feedback on while it's implemented to see if it is truly effective in helping them, you know, teach our students.
Do they have to use this?
No, no. So we will look at user reports again, like for a, a price tag like this, if teachers aren't using it, then we'll have to revisit why they're not using it. But again, I can see where ideally we would like to see it is in PLCs on a professional, when teachers are getting together to say, this is a tool that we can use. And then it's the teachers evaluating if it's good or not. It's, just don't take it for face value.
I mean, I can see it being helpful with substitute teachers, with leaving lessons plans for, for them coming in and stuff. So I, I do see the benefits of it, but yeah, I definitely want to hear back from teachers on how those benefits help.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Daniels-Williams, and then I have a question.
I just, I just have two more questions. Were they specifically asked, I know you've been having conversations for the last six months, but you asked the teachers, would this be something that they preferred to have in their classroom?
So it, it was rolled out at the middle school steering committee, it wasn't individual teachers.
Okay, and then my second question was, if we don't. Okay, and then my second question was, if we don't get this, can we get another teacher?
So.
This is less, this is more than another teacher? So could we get one instead of getting something that they possibly could use?
So this is through Title II. So it'd be, it would have to be a coach per se, um, or something related to professional development. So the other aspect of it too is that, you know, the teachers were asking for support around differentiation. So that's, this is an avenue to give them support around differentiation in, across all fields as opposed to hiring one coach. You know, and that's sixty-two thousand dollars. That's, and if it's in Title II, um, titles have salaries and benefits. So that's not a lot of money for one teacher, no. That, that would be like a first-year teacher.
But a teacher. When the teachers input the data based on the student, are we able to track if the students? I, I hate to come back to numbers, but I, I know the questions that I've been getting. Are we able to show which classrooms are having increase in educational attainment versus classrooms that aren't using it?
So we can see what, what schools, what teachers are using it and then they start making some correlations. But it's gonna come back to, again, not how did Mario Andrea student do, right? Based on this lesson plan. But it would be, again, the, the feedback from teachers saying, this, this tool helped me design a better lesson that met the student's needs. So that's the correlation that we're, we'll be making. You know, so how many lessons plans do they do? We might look at the assessments at the end, um, and to see the student growth.
And the teachers filling out those assessments?
So.
Or is it AI-generated?
Yes, not AI-generated. But, but it's, so it'll be the lessons and a- again, it'd be, again, from the teacher's point of view, more qualitative on, did this help improve your lessons? Were you able to meet the student's needs? And then we would be able to look at, um, classroom assessments to see that, that difference.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Daniels.
So, um, not being a teacher myself, um, how long does it usually take to do lesson plans? More than four hours? Because that's all they get with this program. Total hours available per teacher, they only get four hours. So I was just wondering, how much use will they get for it? It's right at the bottom there, right above the price. So they only get four hours. So I'm just, you know, I have.
So that, the four hours is the availability for them, um, for professional development on how to use the tool. So they have unlimited access. So they could be on the tool every night revamping their lesson.
Every day, teachers shouldn't work at home.
Right, so, um, yes. But they'll have unlimited access.
Shouldn't. I didn't think.
Yeah, no, so what you're looking at there for the four hours is really just on how to use the tool.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Uh, oh, Ms. Gilio?
I, I just wanted to say that, that in terms of lesson planning, there is no, there's no formula.
Oh, I knew.
Okay, because, um, you know, it, it, you could do maybe a great lesson in two hours or you could spend a month on another le-. I mean, there's, you know, it just, it just, it depends on you, what you're trying to accomplish, the class you're teaching.
Lamphier, can you do the roll call?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Daniel Williams?
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes. Uh, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
S's. That's cool. Machines are taking over.
No, it's, it's, it's a, we still have to look at, it's, it's still a tool to help our educators.
I know, but you have to under- in my head, this is not comfortable territory.
Skynet.
Exactly.
The last recommendation is to approve the agreement with Upriver Education for Guidance Counselors, Family Engagement Coordinators, Social Workers, Empower Educators for ELL Professional Development in the amount not to exceed eleven thousand two hundred divided between the operating and Title IV. Finds, um, this is, um, a lot of work coming from Mr. Chopra, um, and, um, Ms. Putin on how do we support, um, you know, the family engagement coordinators. So it really, the, our, um, social workers, power educators, guidance councils who are closest to the kids and families. And again, this is, is something that, um, supports our work with the Department of Justice. So, um, we saw the, we saw the need in this area and, um, strongly recommend, um, this professional develop, develop, development.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Raymond, thank you, Ms. Daniels Williams. Anybody have any comments or questions for this one? Ms. Lamphier?
I was just looking at the paraprof- the, the training workshops for the, um, paraprofessionals. And, um, it says there's five two-hour workshops. Um, they'll be virtual and the dates are to be determined. And I was just wondering if you have any idea when those workshops will be yet and if they'll be close to beginning of the school year, when they would really be probably most helpful.
Can you repeat the?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Like closer to the school year or during the school year?
Like, beginning of the school year, like sometime in September. And where there are five two-hour workshops, I wasn't sure if they're like, um, one workshop that would be offered five times or if it's five different workshops that, um, all of the, all of the paraprofessionals would attend all of them.
Yeah, so it's, it's my understanding it's five different workshops. So a- again, and we'll be working, um, with the, with everybody so that it's on days that it's convenient. And hopefully, you know, it's the September tenth day or early release days. So again, where, um, it, it's not an inconvenience or people have to come in on different hours, so.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, thank you. Daniels Williams?
Yeah, I'm very thankful, um, to the district as they have, um, changed some of the job descriptions and moved them all together, that they're giving them this training to help support the kids. So I just wanted to say thank you and I'm very much in support.
Yes. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions. Ms. Prin, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay, so Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll call?
Sure.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
S's. Awesome, guys. Sorry, I just didn't want to talk over you.
I was just saying, I'm freezing. Like, I actually have goosebumps, it's ridiculous.
Okay, so, um, we actually need to go into a non-public.
Excuse me, um, usually, uh, you guys have, uh, people are allowed to speak afterwards and you sign in. And I didn't hear anyone say about signing in.
Yeah, on, on special board of education meetings, we don't typically have public comment. But, um, if I see no objections, you can have your three minutes if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, are you, can I, I just need to, do I get, have consensus to do a quick non-public? Okay.
Yes.
Come on down. I just, just state your name, state your name and, and address and.
I will. My name's Kristen Powers. I, uh, my pub, my address where I live.
Yep. Well, no, if you're a teacher in the district, you can just say the school.
Uh, Nashua North, I was a teacher. Good evening, um, members of the Board of Education. My name is Kristen Powers and I've taught in Nashua North for fifteen years. I have urgent concerns on the safety and lack of discipline at Nashua North and it's affecting the teacher and student morale and the learning environment of the school. North's hallways are chaotic at best. There are a lot of fights, drug use in the bathrooms, students overdosing. I have seen three this year, myself. And it seems students basically have control over the school. Teachers are once told in a meeting to use teacher bathrooms instead of the kids' bathrooms because they were unsafe. Well then, what should the kids use? Some bathrooms kids will hide in to eat their lunch. Some kids hide in classrooms or in dark corners of the school to eat lunch on the floor because they feel unsafe. At Nashua North, kids are allowed to leave the lunchroom when they want, which results in a chaotic and disruptive behavior near the classrooms. Many kids just hang out on the main staircase and you have to ask them to move in order to get up and down the main stairwell. The administration seems to have gotten used to this unsafe and unsanitary behavior and they don't really re- react to it much anymore. The current disciplinary practices are not effective. I have witnessed students in the in-school suspension ISS where kids are on their phones, they're watching movies or TikTok or sleeping. Students confirm that this is common practice. Some actually enjoy the ISS time. If students are not affected by the school's consequences, then what changes their behavior? It is very hard to teach in classes when kids are screaming obscenities and acting out in the hall. Moreover, at the end of this year, a fight broke out and the administration came late, even though they were at the end of the hall. It was so loud and chaotic in the hall that even the nearby SRO didn't hear what was going on. Teachers are not allowed to break up a fight. It was lucky, but inappropriate, that a senior student stepped in to hold back another to prevent the fight from escalating. This is not okay. All education courses cover Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It is a basic concept that a person cannot achieve any level of success without their basic needs met, including safety. We are jeopardizing so many kids' educations with this lack of safety. I've spoken to the principal and the superintendent about this, but nothing's come of it. The most I got is, there's nothing we can do. Is there really nothing we can do? I encourage the board to look into this matter and go to now Nashua North unannounced to see what is happening over there. Thank you for your time tonight. This board can help make proper changes for the safety of the students and staff, I believe that. No one should feel uncomfortable about the atmosphere that they li- learn or work in. Please help our school become a better place. I also have a statement to share with the board that I will leave with you.
Yeah. Is this pretty much what you read? Okay, thank you. So now we need to go into non-public. Um, we have a couple of things to do in non-public. So I'm looking for a motion, I'll make the motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one A three-two A and E.
Second.
Thank you. We need to do a roll call vote. Yeah.
Thanks, Warren. Enjoy the rest of your, oh, your summer really hasn't started. I didn't want to call, that's, now it's time to enjoy. I would have gone. Good.
Bye.
See ya.
Okay, so. Uh, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yeah, sorry.
So she actually can.
She can do non-public from the phone, but not if she's in a room that has any other people in it.
Yeah. Yeah, so Kirsten, you're probably not appropriate for a non-public just because of the location that you're in. Is that okay if, if?
Nope, I, I get it. I was just gonna say, my gate just got changed, so I have to go find my new gate.
Run, run, run. Okay, all right, Chris, Ms. Prin, thank you for coming in tonight. We appreciate you giving up some of your vacation for your volunteer work.
Well, no, these, these meetings are important, so I wanted to make sure I was available.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, see you all soon.
See ya.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Safe flight. No, he didn't.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, that's true. He didn't, sorry. Um, okay, Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
We are now in non-public, it is seven-thirty.